Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for August 14th, 2019. First item is salute the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing I want to do is wish Dennis a happy birthday. I told him that I probably wouldn't embarrass him, but I told him I couldn't guarantee so. Happy birthday Dennis.
Oh my goodness.
Okay. Town Administrator Weekly Update.
All right. We got a few since we didn't have one last week. I mentioned to you that a couple of people have asked, and a couple meaning a few, just one or two, if the town is interested in pursuing or looking into a dog barking ordinance. They, you know, we, it's, like I said, it's just one or two people. I mean, we could, you know, take some random surveys at my window during tax time for a month. We did that in the past with, remember with the cleanup when we were having zoning issues as far as whether or not people wanted us to spend tax dollar money on cleaning them up? I mean, we could, you know, from October 1st to 31st, ask people if they're interested in it, if they're happy with it the way it is. But I did tell a couple of individuals that I would at least pass that on to you that they would like a barking dog ordinance. The state doesn't have one, or the state does have one, but they don't feel it's stringent. So, something to think about, make any decisions tonight, but...
Think about it.
The policy for the conduct of elected officials that I've given you a couple of weeks ago, we were going to take it home and review it. We had that marking on the front page, so I was looking to make a clean copy to have it signed. Does anybody have any concerns with it? Or do we really want to just change the date and move forward with it with a fresh copy? Or do you guys have a chance to review it, or do you want to put it off for another week?
Put it off for another week.
Okay. I need to bring this up under the workshop because I need to be able to make changes to it before we get to the meeting. So, based on the conversations that I've had with you guys, I have drafted a letter for the previous District One Road Commissioner, so I'm going to read it to you and decide if you want any changes. Again, this is per your instruction. "Dear Blank, this letter serves as an official 10-day notice for you to return all equipment and/or material that you have belonging to the Town of Acton. As you are aware, the Board of Selectmen have left numerous voicemails with you in an attempt to retrieve town property since your resignation on 12/27/2018. Per your own written statement, you indicated everything would be returned no later than January 3rd, 2019. Unfortunately, here we are eight months later, and you have still not complied with this return. Therefore, you have left us no other option but seek legal action. If all equipment and material are not at the town shed by 12 noon on Monday, August 26th, we will turn this matter over to our attorney without further notification to you. When the items are returned, please contact one of us directly so that we may take inventory and document it accordingly."
I'm good to me.
I'm good to me.
No changes?
Hate to do it, but, I mean, I think we've all called him at some point, so...
So, prepare that for the meeting. Just a couple of things. So, the, you know, we have a refrigerator freezer downstairs. I got an email from Code Enforcement saying that, "Good morning, the reset button seems to have tripped over the weekend there." It's attached to a power strip and not directly into the wall, so they would like the electrician to come in and put a new outlet in. He's kind of saying when he's back in the area, he's not asking for a special trip, but I wanted to get permission from you. We'd also like to change out the fluorescent lightings with a few recess in the Deputy Code Enforcement's office, reusing some of them from Christina's and installing some smaller ones in that area. So, I needed your permission to get a quote for that first. And they're also looking to have some shelving installed in the closet. The shelving was actually approved from the prior board. We were going to have the handyman come in and put it in. It was just some, you know, shelves on the wall, but we really never got to, never got to it before the fiscal year ended. So, are you okay with me getting an electrical price for the, when, the lights down there in the other two offices and the refrigerator?
Yep.
I think quotes won't hurt, no.
No.
All right, I'll bring you back a price.
The price is plugged into a strip. The ones up here were plugged into a strip and the insurance company made us...
Yeah, they may not have seen it yet.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll work on that. I think I mentioned it last week, but I just wanted to mention on air that John McLean, the grant class that I think that Leslie Berlin was asking about, John McLean reached back, "Thanks for reaching out. There is no fee for the workshop." The sign up, he just needs to know about the sign up. So, if anybody's interested in that class in Portland, they need to contact him directly. I did send this email directly to the Road Committee so that they could do that themselves. The, I'm trying to get my title right. De, I don't know, one of the deputy fire chiefs or one of the ricksmith brought me some information and on the, a boat and trailer that he believes we need to sell. I haven't had a chance to talk to Dave about it yet.
Yep.
Looks like he's out there. The, it had come up with a previous chief, but we weren't able to get any year, make, model, or VIN, and if the town is selling it, you know, I need the information. So, he did bring me all of the information. They've got a minimum price, so we're going to be looking for you guys in the meeting to decide if you want to, want to sell it, and maybe we can bring the fire chief up at that time.
Yeah.
Received an email from the APAT Director asking if he should produce the entire two hours of dead air slash background chatter or the 20 minutes of the actual meeting. This was last week when we had the two-hour executive session. He wants to know, I mean, I did tell him that I feel like executive sessions going forward, if we have them, they should be brief. Didn't expect a lot, you know, a lengthy one like that again, but he does want to know how you'd like that handled.
Anybody reviewed the video?
I haven't.
It's, I mean, it is available. I can review it.
I'd review it and make sure that it's all, nothing...
Nothing said.
Nothing said, nothing done, then I would delete it.
You would cut into up to the 20 minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, tell them, have them keep a, I definitely would keep a copy of the whole thing.
Okay.
But then the aired one would be, yep.
I kind of mentioned last week, but I wanted to make sure you saw the whole thing, that there was a rabies, case of rabies in Acton through a fox that was confirmed. So, we've put some posters up that the state has sent us, but they asked that you guys be notified.
What part of town, do you know?
No, they just said in Acton. Would you like me to find out?
Might be a good idea.
Yeah.
So, the, we have two leases for photocopiers, one for the upstairs copier, one for the downstairs copier. I, I thought that the copier upstairs was coming due in the lease, the copier man, as I call him, had emailed me a week or so ago and asked if he could set up an appointment to go over it. So, I reached out to all the staff upstairs. We made our list of the problems we had with the copier, you know, we, we had a plan going into this 2:30 meeting. Turned out it was the copier downstairs that the lease was expiring on. CEO was not in the building, so I brought the deputy up, her and I and the copier guy, I'm sorry, he doesn't have a name, Mark. I had a very nice conversation. We went over some of her concerns. Obviously didn't make any decisions until, you know, the people above her and below her also give their input, but it looks like the, the lease amount is going to end up being the same amount, and once they give me some final feedback downstairs, we'll bring it through to sign next week, but there's no increases.
Is that copier different than the one upstairs?
It is. It's smaller and it doesn't do as much, but that's per their request. The deputy actually asked today if she could have it even more or less basic. And it's funny, we kind of joked about my husband's 50th coming up next week, and what he would like is a new flip phone, you know, and I'm like, you can't find them anymore. So, she ha, they have the most basic now, you know what I mean? You can't go back anymore, kind of like phones. But the, but Mark did say that he could change some of the buttons so they weren't seeing as many, and it might look a little user-friendly, and he offered to do some free training. So, we're definitely not, you know, it didn't sound like they wanted a more fancy one, but we'll certainly check with Ken first.
So, it's not going to cost us anymore?
It's not going to cost her any more money. But she has, they have to upgrade a little bit because they don't make flip phones anymore, so. Next thing I've had was to just, I was hoping that the board could just have a kind of a conversation about liaisons. I guess two things. There was some talk between Ed and I and Kim and I, and I think I mentioned this to David, about maybe swapping something around, but more just the role of the liaison and kind of how you guys see it. I mean, David being new on the board, you guys did agree and separate out the liaisons, but one of the Selectmen, I think, is getting approached to be, have a more active role than the board has normally taken in the past. So, I guess that Selectmen was just kind of, you know, hoping to talk about what you guys as a whole saw. I mean, do you expect the liaison to attend every single meeting? Do you, you know, are we looking to maybe make them official members and try to get them voting powers? What exa, I mean, the memo says that it's the first point of contact that there's an issue and that you would attend, you know, sporadic meetings, but certainly not all of them. So, I think we just...
That's how I've always seen it. I mean, the liaison is not a board member on any of the boards. They're just a, a contact, someone to bounce ideas off of, someone to bring ideas back to this board.
Right.
But definitely not a member and not a voting member of any of the boards.
Yeah, I mean, first, for the, you know, liaison to Kim to the planning board, you know, to go to every planning board meeting, you know, the stuff that they're doing is pretty much, you know, stuff that really a Selectman doesn't have to be there for.
I think every once in a while.
Yeah, just, you know, pop in, you know, but, I mean, the, the boards should be running themselves.
Right. Yeah, and I think they definitely are, and I don't, you know, and I don't want to pick out any individual board, but I think the, the conflict piece is important too, so that if there is an issue, you know, if we have an issue with the town clerk's office, I mean, Ed is the liaison to the town hall by default because he's the chair. I mean, if there's an issue with the clerk's office and he's spending every single day in there, you know, registering vehicles and collecting taxes and doing that, he's not going to be able to be, you know, is he going to be able to be unbiased when the concerns come in, so...
Yeah, you can't be.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's with any committee, Road Committee, the Finance Committee, you know, we should be, you know, attending, I mean, as many as we can, obviously. But, you know, but say the Road Committee, okay? If you're on the Road Committee going to every meeting, you're pretty much at that point acting as a member of the Road Committee. You know, the planning board, the same idea, and with the issue that we're having with this one committee wanting, I don't know if this is, please say, but, you know, wanting that, that select board member to be a voting member, I mean, that's just changing all the rules, and we can't have that. And we don't. As a select board, our job is to take care of this here. No, no, but this is what was, you know, kind of was being mentioned around, and, you know, we want to stop that before we, you know, we get that out of hand, but, but at the end of the day, you know, that, those boards should be coming to us more than anything. We shouldn't be going to them.
Right.
Not saying that, you know, it's not important that we don't know what's going on, you know, that's why we should be at least attending some here and there, and obviously if they come to us and there's some big issue, then yeah, we go to it. But, I mean, the planning board, you can go down there and go through plans, so that's not the Selectmen's job to do that. It's their job to give us their recommendation, so...
So, leave things the way they were, occasional appearance, and more support if they need anything to reach out to you guys.
Every, every board, or most of them, or pretty much all of them, take minutes at their meetings.
Right.
And I do see the job of the liaison to read those minutes.
Yeah.
And stay up to date.
If we get them.
That way.
I mean, the planning board is good because they put them online.
Right.
And at the same time, at the end of the day, if, if I, if I go to, you know, being a liaison, whoop, sorry about that to me, even hearing you talking.
She's, she was saying that the rec just sent her minutes.
They just sent you the minutes.
And it's, and I guess it's important to, as a liaison, if you don't see that the town administrator is CC'd in there, if you forward them to me, it's my job to make sure the, you know, the other people see them as well, because even though only one of you is a liaison, you still need to be following along what's going on, because, you know...
Yeah, I mean, that's why we have boards and committees and chairs of the, other boards and whatnot.
Yeah, they're supposed to be the voice.
We're not on all those.
They're supposed to be the opposite voice, you know, to make sure, you know, be the neutral voice.
Yeah.
You know, if I go to, say, the Fire Commission thing and I, every, every one, and, you know, I don't want anybody to think that I'm trying to influence something by being there every single time.
But that one's a little different, though. You are a, you are a voting member.
Fire Department, he means.
But I'm talking about if I go to their Fire Department.
Oh, yeah, right, their monthly meetings and whatnot, yeah.
But, I mean, and I will, if they want me to be there, I'll go, you know, but at the same time, I mean, it's their job to do their job.
Right. Right. Yeah, and not for us to micromanage it.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So, does that help? Kim? Okay. So, before we get into the season, so she has two full plates right now with the Road Committee and Planning Board. A lot going on in both of them, and, you know, personal things going on as well, capital of that. Do we, so Ed has Warrant and Finance, and what else? Oh, boy, I have to look my list. You know. So, David has the Fire Department and the Transfer Station.
Transfer Station, Forest Conservation.
Oh, school.
You must have the school.
I have the school.
Okay. So, I mean, are you, I mean, would it, would it help alleviate anything if you swapped with either one of the gentlemen? I mean, I'm...
The school?
I was going to say, how am I doing Warrant and Finance either?
You haven't done Warrant and Finance?
I haven't yet.
You haven't?
No.
The other one is the, the Road too. I mean, I, I know that you guys talked about in the beginning, but David's got a, and I think things are going smoothly. He's got a lot of background there.
I mean, I'll, I'll swap o, I'll, I'll take the Roads if you want, and I'll give you a Conservation Committee.
I would do that, so.
Okay.
How about the Transfer Station?
I don't know.
I'm just trying to think of something to balance how, how busy some of them are versus the others.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? The Transfer Station, God love him, Bob generally comes to me.
I'm not so sure that if, if we swap Warrant and Finance for Planning Board, it's still a busy committee.
Yeah.
Right. Well, that's, well, I feel if we took one of her two away...
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. I mean, she'd either, if, if I swapped, it would either have to be the School or the Warrant Finance.
Right.
I mean, it doesn't, there's nothing saying that you, you can't do another, can't do it again.
I mean, you don't have to go to all the meetings either. That's what you have to remember.
No, that's, you know, so...
Oh, and she has the rec with the new committee with a lot of new people, so they're pretty active right now.
That's pretty active.
Yeah, but that's, you know, and that's, I mean, they're all good committees. That's more of a fun active, if you would, you know, versus a hard-working active, like, I'm going to get, I'm going to put my foot in my mouth for them.
Yeah, so I'm going to interrupt you so I you don't get to...
I mean, Warrant Finance is, is a hard-working active, I see, you know.
So, Warrant and Finance is...
We switched School for Road Committee, Ed and I, because Schools...
Didn't you have Road Committee last?
No.
Who did?
Elise.
Okay.
Yeah, Elise did.
I mean...
So, you're going to take on the School?
Because I can do the Schools now, because I couldn't do it last year because it was on the same day.
Right, it was on a Tuesday.
Right, so that makes it easier.
Sure.
I mean, I had it, but I couldn't go to any meetings last year.
So, Ed, you're taking the Road Committee?
I'll take the Road Committee.
And you're taking the School?
Yeah.
And you're keeping down, you're keeping Code Enforcement Planning? Okay. So, nothing else changes? Nothing changes with David?
That's fine. Nothing I can't with Planning Board.
Yeah. Planning Board's okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, I will send a memo, memo to just those departments.
Sure.
All right, want to take a peek at the agenda before I go out and copy it? I think that's pretty much what I have.
Table B.
I'm sorry?
B.
Yeah, I've got a table that, I had, uh...
Sounds good.
Some issues this weekend that we couldn't...
Yep.
...do with that.
Yep.
So, am I just taking it off, or you're just going to table it when you get there?
Table for next week.
Okay. And I hate to be the one to say this, so...
I'm probably going to scrap that idea anyway.
Well, that's what I need to know, because you've given me work.
I don't, we don't have time to do it.
I, honestly, if my, my suggestion is we get it down in the town garage.
Yeah.
Get it in the town garage.
Go from there.
Go from there, get it undercover.
Yep.
There's plenty of room. Dave, I will, I mean, there's plenty of room in there. The hay is out of there, everything. We can get that in there.
That's mine.
So, we'll leave it on there, you guys can recap this.
Leave it on, we'll talk about it, and we'll just take care of it that way.
Okay.
All right.
The hay's gone now, too.
So, anything else that you want to add or take off?
Um...
Parking lot.
I'm going to hate, I'm going to hate to, oh, I just, I, I'll give you the background on that now. I got a phone call from Elise.
Well, I have paperwork.
And she just kind of wants to, wants us to reconsider, but...
Yeah. We can't see down there.
We can...
Well, there's a difference between the lights that we're going to talk about in the...
Oh, no, no, I wasn't talking about the lights.
He's talking about the parking lot.
I thought we already made a decision on that.
We did, but like I say, I did get a phone call from her, and I thought at least we could discuss it one more time, but if you're happy with that decision, we'll take it on.
Well, I mean, myself, if there's an issue, we, we made, we made a decision, fine.
True.
If one individual has, you know, an issue with our decision, then come right up and let us know, you know?
Yeah, I mean, she called me directly, so...
I know, but, you know, I mean, to make, make good practices, you know?
Would be to come up.
Any individual has an issue instead of, you know, and I understand, you know, but if we're going to spend our time discussing this and she can, or this individual can spend their time explaining to us why we should be doing this, so...
Do you want me to ask her to come before the board? If she still has concerns, she wants to share?
Yeah.
So, again, so I'm going to leave that on there, and we'll just recap that.
Yeah, we'll just zip by it.
Is there anything you actually don't want to discuss, or you want to add?
I'm, like I said, I'm going to hate this, but I want to put social, put under, let's see, A, B, C, D, E, F, under a new social media.
May I, may I make that E and make the executive F?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Oh, we're in the, oh, I didn't see the executive section.
It's very brief. It's regarding salaries, so it needs to be in the executive session.
Yeah, so we're going to swap, so E, return to F.
Any, any other changes?
And that's going to be quick anyway, the social media ones, so...
Yeah.
So, you'll start signing the warrants?
Yes, ma'am.
You'll go make some changes?
Yep. Sounds good.
Is that what you're talking about right there? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not going to happe on anything, I'm just, I'm just going to thought.
I've got a couple thoughts. I know what you guys are doing. Going to give you all the lands, so everybody's watching me sign.
Yeah, I just grabbed the handful and gave it to her, figured I'd start this one.
I got my stamp coming.
I've actually got one of those, I should...
I got one, but it says DW excavation. I don't think that'd be a good idea, so...
No.
But I bet, I bet the public would appreciate it.
No, I got a, I got a stamp, but I used to do 30 or 40 checks a week or so.
Yeah. What's that?
Spent today striping and doing packers.
And we were grading sidewalks all day.
We just bought a new line strip we saw.
Can I talk to you over there?
Sure.
Very bad. Kate? Oh, I don't get paid again this week.
You go for pay.
Yeah, and none of us picked up on it. We all signed off on this?
Just signed up.
I don't get paid until sometime in September.
But I'm sorry, but I thought maybe you were asking for just a monthly stuff, and that's what I thought it was.
No, I never, I didn't even look.
Next week, I was asked about it.
Yeah.
You know, so...
Yeah, no, Michelle sent me a note and said, "We overpaid you, so we're not going to be paying you for a while." Like I say, I didn't even look at it, I just, because that, that to me was just a standard. I mean, the rest of them I always look at, but...
Who's battery?
Want to start on some of these?
Ah, don't matter.
Yeah, you want to take this pile?
Look, you got a pile for me? There we go.
We're going to do something here, too.
Yes, we are.
By the end of the month.
Oh, yeah, I already got a plan for you.
Good.
Awesome.
Even if it involves going there, on the day of...
Yeah, we can do that, too.
Yeah. Good.
I guess I'll have to do those.
I gave out one to me. Is that it?
Huh. Where are we going to discuss with, try to get him to do some sort of description like he's got to?
He's got to.
Yeah.
Yep, I know, one way to get his attention.
Yeah.
I did have a conversation with him tonight. I was trying to get him to come here tonight.
Well, he should be.
He's got something, you know, him and his wife had something going on, so...
Sure.
Said he would be here next week.
Yeah, federal loan.
I do, too.
Yeah. You should be home tonight.
All the breakdowns on the roads, if you want to...
Tell you what, you know, my wife been telling me for 10 years now, she doesn't need a dishwasher, but when she's in the hospital for four days, she's getting a dishwasher, because I did dishes, I did the dishes for the first time in like 10 years.
How long have you been married?
Tell me, let them sit for four years.
Uh, be 19.
So, see, she had a dishwasher for 19 years.[1515.00] So, see, she had a dishwasher for nineteen years.
Well, we had a dishwasher.
It just didn't work.
Yeah, yeah, she's getting a dishwasher.
Took a trip to the, took a trip to the hospital to make it work.
Oh, she still says she's a wall one.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna go out, I'm gonna go out to seal bid for them. Is that, and this is with a minimum price up for this?
Yeah.
And, I mean, I need a year make and model.
I don't want one.
I'm guessing it's a smoker craft?
Yes.
Because that's generally with the bin me, any idea what year it might be?
First time she'd be in the hospital right now, I'd be replacing the dishwasher.
Let me see if I can, like, the vehicles, you can figure out by the eleventh digit, let me see if there's something on the boats.
Then we looked, and that was the only thing that could find.
It was pretty hectic, going back and forth.
So, how much do you want, what's your minimum on that?
More than night and working. I tell you what, I ain't taking it back there again. No way.
I won't go there anyway.
I mean, two hundred and fifty bucks, I don't, I have no idea. Five hundred? You think it's that worth that much?
Yeah.
Okay.
She never saw her doctor until an hour before she went, four days later.
Just charge paperwork, yeah. Yeah.
The nurse is telling her what she, uh, what she needs to take for medication, and my wife's like, no, you're wrong, read the thing, and she wouldn't even tell her, right?
Oops. We gotta put something on it, because I can't. I need identification, I need a veritastamp.
Touchdown, start in.
Usually there's a list, you know what I mean, that's, a list, like, the eleventh digit means something, but, all right, well, let me, um, so I'll ask the board, I, I think that's a little high for that, but I can ask, I'll ask them at their meeting and.
Still coming.
Anything over a grand is gonna be high.
What's that for?
Want to ask Weaver?
Yes, I'm one of them, you know, that are packed, I don't take.
I mean, I see a lot of, I see a lot of boats and a lot of bill of sales.
Yeah.
That's why I just.
Is it that little skiff thing there, you guys?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about a minimum price to put it out to bid for. Um, so, yeah, you can put a, just put a signature on it, she's going to the class. All right, so you're good with that, I feel like there was something else, boat, trailer, I mean, oh, the trailer.
There's no VIN number.
So, can we call it a homemade?
It's not homemade.
No, it's a factory.
It's old.
Yeah.
Because I donated it to the fire department.
Main doesn't.
Okay, that's where it come, okay.
It's where it came from, yeah.
So, main doesn't lie, you can't gift something unless, it's either homemade trailer, or it's up to the buyer to find, to have that information before he agrees to buy it. In this case, donate it.
It's, there's no bill of sale on it?
What about?
No, not, not that.
It was registered, so we.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, can you get me a plate number?
Yeah, well, we have the, you.
Oh, it's registered to the town?
Yes, there's municipal plates on it.
Um, I mean, I probably have a copy, the prior chief didn't, I didn't know.
You should have all the, all of our registrations in the say.
Yeah, I should have copies from the insurance company, well, I don't, I can tell you that, I have photocopies of certain, well, I mean, you should have the registrations in case you get stopped.
Yes, photocopies.
I mean, I should, I should have photo, well, you should have the originals. I should have photocopies.
That was brought up.
I mean, that's.
My concern is that they should be put in the fire crew's say.
Yeah, I mean, main law requires that the registration be on the vehicle, so I'm not sure that.
So, well, what we usually do is just put a copy in, original say.
All right, right there, so since November first of two thousand and seventy-two, federal law requires all boats have a twelve.
This one here looks like I just signed this one here, huh?
Yeah, um, yeah, everything.
So, that's, yeah.
Nineteen seventy-two or older.
Right, so.
I mean, you can do it how, be the way you want, but.
Like packets.
Yep.
I think these go in a different packet here, I believe.
No, okay, yeah, those went with that, yeah. Actually, they're gonna end up in there.
Now, here we go, VIN to year chart, see? Oh, but that's, so that's the vehicle, tenth character and seventeenth is the year, so that we knew that, but that's, that's in vehicles. So. So, that's what they call a VIN to year chart for boats. VIN to year chart for boats. Ooh.
There we go.
Look at that. Yeah. Thanks.
New boots, huh?
Yes.
I made a big mistake two weeks ago, three weeks ago, when we had that real hot spell. I bought a brand-new pair of boots, and I'm down in Sanford, and we're walking, I doing that mile stretch there, and I walked back and forth sweating, while I got two blisters that you cannot imagine.
All right, let me do some research, I'll find it.
Never gotten a blister from a brand-new pair of boots.
Don't be surprised when you see it advertised, so, you're ready to?
Yep.
Um, I just don't, I guess I'll take whatever's on the trailer registration.
I think I put four miles walking down the road that day up there, you know.
VIN to year, that's all, um, these are all, aren't boats. We don't know what kind of motor, oh, it's a Mercury motor, so maybe this is, maybe this would work. Serial number. So, well, that only goes to eighty, so that's what I'm gonna help us.
Okay, that's. What's the reason if it's on the boat, they got another one?
It's not safe.
It's not safe.
You can't really effectively do a rescue.
I have to do it on my computer.
That's the only reason it's not safe.
Right.
Good boat, just not, not good for what their purpose is.
All right, let me do some digging, but.
You have two or three people in it, you're already loaded without putting a patient in it.
Are we all signed up already?
That was the idea.
Okay. Yeah, I kinda had an idea, but I just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, you all set?
Yes.
Okay, warrants assigned, the bills are taken care of, approval of the agenda. Did we get a new one of these?
Yes, you did.
What did I do with it?
If you look at E and F.
How about I can find it?
Put it in the bills?
I think it ended up in one of these when I picked up everything.
On the agenda, I think it might be a good idea to see if we deleted B, can we swap?
Well, we didn't, I'm sorry, not to interrupt, we didn't delete B, we're just gonna table it when we get there.
Table it, but for tonight. Uh, can we, um, because we're gonna be talking fire rescue commission, if we can, uh, put G, so, because I think that's all gonna kinda intertwine with it, so.
Move G up. G and B will swap, how's that? Did you find it in?
I didn't find it, that's okay, I'll.
Are there any more extra agendas over there?
Yeah.
Extra what?
Agenda.
Right here.
Okay, never mind, I got one.
I got one right here. So, that must be yours.
It could be, maybe I.
I thought I put them right in front of you, but I wasn't gonna say that.
I thought, I thought it went on top of this, so. That's okay, thanks. Been a long day.
It has.
Okay, so let's see, that's done, that's done, that's done, approval, okay, approval of the agenda, we got that file?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
With the amendment from David.
With the amendment.
With the amendment.
What we were amending, I was too busy.
We're swapping B and G.
B and G are gonna be swapped.
B and G, okay. Sounds good. Okay, um, moved to second it to amend the agenda and accept it, any further discussion? Nope, call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Minutes of the last meeting.
I'll, uh, make a motion to approve the minutes of August seventh.
I make a motion to accept.
Just second it.
Second it. Long day.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, moved to second it to accept the minutes of August seventh, any further discussion, call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
And you also have the minutes from the thirty-first that Kim wasn't present at.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the minutes of the meeting for, uh, what, the thirty-first?
Thirty-first.
Yeah.
Uh, July thirty-first.
July thirty-first.
Okay, I'll second that, where Kim wasn't here for it.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed, any abstentions? One abstention, okay. Okay, department heads and committee chair updates.
Uh, Will Langley, District One, uh, last week, we didn't have the, uh, meeting, so just update you guys, uh, we finished, we completed both our projects, the one on the H Road, one on Acton Bridge, those are all done, um, this week, we've been mowing on the side of the road, and I've completed that today, and Robin and Terry have been out cutting brush, uh, we're gonna chip all of our brush that we've been cutting the last few weeks, and today, and this week, and, uh, the next week, we're gonna be headed to the dandy road and start that project, so.
For the culvert on?
Yeah, the culvert, uh, culvert on Mann Road, yeah, that's right, so. That's all.
I asked him, because he, he gave his little thing there, that what he's doing, and it's a dandy road, and I just, I asked him, because I wasn't sure what was going on, but, yeah.
That's it.
Okay, and District Two hired you to do mowing on that side as well?
Yeah, that's correct, I finished this this morning, so.
You're all done, both sides?
Yeah, both sides are all done, so.
Perfect, good, that's what I love to see, is both sides working like that, so. That was not a slam, don't worry, don't take it that way.
Ain't worried about it.
I'm just saying, I mean, it's, that's.
It's not like I was looking for anymore, or.
No, I know, no, no, but I did think that's great, so, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank God, Will.
Good evening, uh, Dave Langley, interim fire chief, uh, just to update you on, um, we took ownership of the, our new air packs this evening, uh, they delivered those at three o'clock this afternoon. So, we've taken ownership of seventeen packs, thirty-four bottles, and twenty-three batteries for those, uh, August twenty-seventh, the company's coming down to do department training, uh, this, none of the packs will be put in service, uh, until we've all been trained on them, if you're physically fit to wear an air pack, you will be trained on them before they will be put into, you can use them, um, we need to log them, uh, the serial numbers are very expensive, um, we're gonna get with the town administrator, uh, Captain Hamwell, so we, we wanna, um, look into what our replacement policy is, insurance-wise, whether it's a balloon policy, and, and as, as we know, uh, things are very expensive, as, as we grow, as the town grows, the department grows, we need, really need to tighten up, maybe, we'll look with Jennifer and see what there's, so.
Make sure we notify main municipal, get them covered on our insurance.
Exactly, all that stuff, so, um, doing that.
How much were they per pack?
What's that?
How much were they per pack?
I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure, no.
We'll to insure them, so if they get damaged during a fire, somebody just talking about.
Yeah, I mean, there's certain types of liability, everything listed out is on there.
Yeah, so.
I can't tell you what the coverage is, but that we do cover them.
So, that's, that's why we, we were talking about, we, we need to, to look into that and, and see, do we go to a full.
So, those would be covered right now?
Uh, yeah, well, no.
Not until we call, maybe this will tell them we have them, so it only gives us a couple of writing.
Because right now, we got double the amount of packs that we normally would have.
But they're not, they're just.
You don't need to use them right now, right?
No, they will not be used till.
But are they, so they're the exact same quality, you want me to put the same value on them as the other ones?
No, we'll have to, that's what I'm saying, because of the new technology.
They get more money.
Exactly, yeah, so.
We know the value, because we just paid for them, right?
So, yep.
Yeah, I mean, my only, my only fear is if the building burned to the ground tonight.
Yes, yes, don't say that.
Well, you have X, you have X amount of contents.
If a building burned to the ground tonight, the insurance on the building would cover it.
Yeah, yes, yes, the contents in the, that's correct, so.
Okay.
Uh, doing that there, so, like I said, we, uh, thank you, right after town meeting that Monday morning, they were ordered, um, and everything, so, we're, we're in the process of getting those, um, like I said, and getting those all logged in, getting things taken care of, so, uh, we'll be up to par on that, uh, this coming Monday, uh, Captain Ham and Captain Lambert is our annual hose testing, and ladder testing, which to, to meet NFPA standards, everything needs to be tested, so you will see, um, Engine One, Engine Two, and Tank Seven in and out of town, we go down to the old Sanford High School, we have a company that comes in, they test everything, they test our ladders, we get everything all certified, it's in a notebook, um, MMA likes that, and everything's all good like that, that's something we started four years ago, uh, takes them roughly a half a day to do it, and it's, it's all done, and if we find problems, we pull it out of service and, and go from there. The duty crew will be staying in town, so we still, uh, duty crew we have will be, will be in town to, to take care of calls, and that there, um, if you want, uh, or we can table it till we get to, uh, see on all buil, business bolts like gate, uh, or do you want me just to? You wanna tape, you want me to come back up afterwards? Okay, all right, so.
Question, um, when we, we had spoken, when I'd gone, you know, as the liaison, you, um, issues, you've got a couple of trucks there, you're having some issues, are you, you, um, you got pinpointed what you're gonna be able to do with those mechanical issues, yeah?
Not yet, well, we've got some phone calls out, and, and looking for some information and, and go there.
Which trucks do you have issue, are you having issues with?
Uh, Engine One, Engine One has a, um, got an issue, any big issues?
What's the year make and model, because that doesn't.
That's the Peterbilt, that's a two thousand one.
So, it's not the new one?
Two with three.
Two thousand and two Peterbilt, that was the first, that was the first six-man cab we bought there, um, it was, um, brought to our attention that the frame has, starting to have some issues, the undercoating's come off, and separated a little bit, the, the truck is still in service, we're still running it, there's nothing mechanically wrong, but it's something that needs to be addressed, we, we need to get another ten years out of that truck, um, as you all know on the board, I'm a big advocate when it comes to numbers, um, that, that was not budgeted in, into, uh, the numbers that warrant finance, I'm sorry to say, uh, so, once we get some numbers, I'll be coming back, back to you guys, and, and, uh, we're gonna have to address that, so, the trucks will be, um, Captain Ham, we've spoken, uh, the trucks will be going for undercoating annually, and getting pressure washed, we've got a nice pressure washer, we're getting into a program over there, and, you know, really need to start doing some in-house stuff, because replace that truck, you're looking at half a million dollars, so.
Well, I know, like, myself, I spray, uh, New Hampshire oil, something like that, you ever thought about maybe having someone do that?
Yes, we've gotten prices from Knoxes, and that we're there, it's, um, could get it from other places, but he's local, he's right in town, he's got a big garage, um, and Adrian, Adrian, they, they treat us well down there, too, so, yeah, so.
Uh, I, when I spoke to these guys the other night, or after the, uh, fire commission meeting, um, they had some issues that they, they were addressing, and, um, obviously, they didn't budget for these, and, um, so, I had made a suggestion that, after I spoke with you guys there, that, you know, um, when we, cause A and B, uh, A and the next two ones on the agenda there, I'll kinda roll into this issue here, so I don't know if we can jump right into that, if we have any more department heads, but, um, that with the mechanical issues we maybe have, and you got some tires, too, you said.
Yeah, exactly.
There's some other stuff there, that, um, you know, we do have to, um, hire this new chief, and what we're doing with the chief and the paramedic, that we might have a shortfall of money, and it might be something there that we might be able to roll in at the same time, and try, try to, if we can get some numbers out of you.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, later on down the road here.
Yep.
That's, you know, that's what I discussed with them.
And if we can sell these items, especially at the minimums they've put, I mean, that's gonna help towards it, too, so.
Exactly, yeah.
The best thing to do is get those numbers as soon as you can, and what you need, and then we can bring them back to the treasurer and the board and figure out, because you can move things around, and sort them out, make sure they get.
Because, you know, like, the tires and stuff you're talking about, you know, you're talking, um, be three, four, five thousand dollars.
Yes, because, yeah, because NFPA standards say that tires on a fire apparatus or emergency apparatus is only good for eight years, unless they're concerned, weather cracking, dry rot, and things like that there, um, so, we've got three trucks over there that have, have meant, that are beyond their eight-year standard, so, um, well, you know, so there's, uh, there's certain standards we need to meet and everything, and unfortunately, it comes with a price, so. But, um, yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly, we'll get some prices, we'll get some stuff, and you guys have always been supportive for us, and the people in town have, so, we'll, uh, we'll just make it work, so. All right, thank you, guys.
We think we could just roll in, couldn't we, like you just said, do we have any other department heads that need to speak?
Yeah, but he's not, I mean, the next, the next two are really gonna be, it's gonna be the, more of the board, rather than, because he's on the committee.
Any other department heads, committee chairs?
You should be good, David.
You're good for it now, yeah.
Okay. Go right ahead.
I am gonna be, I, I am gonna be asking Dave to come up, because he's gonna explain something that.
Yeah, that's what you were saying.
I'm not familiar with, but I don't want to explain it wrong.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Fire, Fire Rescue Commission, fire chief position.
Okay, um, why I asked to have the, um, the fire chief job description moved up is because, um, you know, we've got the, uh.
Draft.
We got the draft here, you guys have looked at it.
Last week.
And, um, I don't find it, I think it's pretty good.
I do, too.
Two minor things that Ed wanted to change in there, but they were minor.
That was just adding the personnel policy wording into it, just to reference a personnel policy.
When, when we discussed it, there was, um, what we had done is we had gone off the, um, we had had the, uh, city of Sanford and the town of Wells, and, uh, the town of Wells one was pretty right on, you know, except the problem is, those towns and cities, they have town managers and stuff like that, so, there was a word that we, uh, the whole committee, what we did is, we'd read, read through it, and we'd see something like that, and, um, so, what we had done is we changed over to the board of selectmen.
Right.
And, and there was an issue with the hiring and firing, um, that we, we, I really thought that we should have, um, the select board should have a say before any, uh, hiring and firing.
Well, they're the only ones that have a say, right.
They're the only ones that have a say in it.
The, the way the word was in it, that they didn't, it was the chief's responsibility, so that's why we, we added those in there, and I, I thought we were being proactive by doing that.
And that's where I wanted the.
Personnel.
Personnel policy plugged into that, because that's where that meets us.
Right, and they have to follow the, you've got to follow it, do you, um, David, is there, who has, does anybody have that electronically, to save us from re-typing it, because I need to make it act as own?
Sharon Anderson, um, Sharon Jackson.
So, she has a copy of it, or you think she has it electronic, electronically?
You mean, she emailed it to me, so that.
Oh, she emailed you that?
Yeah, yeah, which, yeah, because it took it forever, because it wouldn't go through on mine, everybody else got it, but for some reason, it wasn't going through mine, she's got it, she.
Okay, so I'll reach out to her, because if we can, because if, once they, they can approve it, we can, I don't know if you're ready to start advertising it.
Well, that's, that's one, that's why I wanted to move it all around, because the whole idea of getting that done is so that we can start the advertisement, and, uh.
I just need to make it our own, put the town's header on it and stuff, so.
So, uh, um.
DMA, I got it.
So, at the same time, um, I spoke to the, um, it wasn't the commission, because the commission's dealing with just the fire chief.
Right.
Um, I spoke with the, uh, chief, the assistant, the captains, and all that afterwards, and they would really like to proceed, uh, and hire and aid the paramedic, okay? Um, the only concern I had was, we had to make sure that there's, we, we, there's money there for a paramedic, okay, if we use the money that's set aside for the chief, okay?
Part of that money.
Part of the money, okay, so, that's why, when I, when we're speaking with Dave, is, at some point, I think, because they were, at, at, at the commission, when we were going through all the numbers, okay, they're trying to rob this line here, do this, do that, we, we've got a shortfall between ten and fourteen thousand dollars, um, as time goes on, because I don't believe that we're gonna have a guy hired here, or, or anybody hired here, a person hired here within the next month or so anyways, but, and we are paying a wage, but not the wage we were paying, so there's some money being saved, but at the end of the day, I don't feel that the fire department wants Rob Peters, Pay Paul, out of their line item budget specialist.
No, no, it should, it should stay within the personnel numbers.
So, like, I made a suggestion to the, um, to the fire department, that what we, we should be doing is get the numbers from Dave, the repair stuff, this and that stuff that's unexpected, and we gotta meet with Ja, uh, Michelle, and see what the end, end number's gonna be to hire on the, because we came up with a number, you know, that we used the thirty dollars, you know.
The chief or the paramedic?
The chief, the chief, and we, we already have a, uh, we had a number, um.
So, and not to, just not to interrupt you, but, so the paramedic, so we have the job posting that we used the last time.
Yes.
When we hired Sharon.
I believe that's what we're gonna roll the same thing.
Yep, so we have that, and, and with the board's approval, I can start advertising that anytime, so you could.
Now, Dave, if you would, could you come up and explain how the, see, I was all worried, because not knowing how much money and everything, and how long this is gonna be, but I guess there's a process where they, they do, you can explain it, Dave, better than I can.
Yes, so, in the process of, of us hiring per diem people, or, or also the same format as hiring somebody, um, and we use it the same format as the larger cities do, is that, um, we, we advertise it, and then we take and do interviews, and then also, we put them through a, a physical agility test.
Right, and we did all that the first time.
Yep, so, saying that, if we had five people, and we put them on a list, and when an opening comes, we call number one, hey, we, you know, we have this opening, you still interested in, if they are, then we bring them back in, but they've already done their end test, they've already met their, um, all the requirements that they need, so, so they're, that list is good, they keep it open for a year.
So, they're like on hold.
Exactly, because some people, some people may be gonna leave, or they're still waiting, you know.
Take a job somewhere else.
Exactly, or they just want to do a per diem shift, but we, we want to standardize everything, so, uh, that's the way me and Rick had set it up years ago, and that's the way we're still running that format, so, we will have a, a list of candidates to, to, to pick from, so.
But, you were saying, for the per diem or for the paramedic?
We use the si, the list, the same list.
For the paramedic.
Yes, but, you know what?
But you, so you don't have a current list, we need to advertise this.
I do, I do not believe that there is a current list, I'd have to check with Deputy Smith.
Right, because we have to advert, I mean.
It's over a year anyway.
Yes, exactly.
Give you a opportunity.
What we've got to do is, we've got to advertise the list.
Right.
You know, the, the position.
Right.
Okay, what, what we, what we wanted, what I believe we should be doing is advertise the list now.
Right.
Get it so they can get these people and some of these people in here to do their, um.
Start that process.
There'll be, there'll be a paramedic, firefighter one, firefighter two, it's gonna be.
Do you wanna advertise all three of them?
That, that person is gonna be a firefighter, paramedic position.
Oh, you're talking about just the paramedic, right?
Yeah.
So, i- i- I, I guess I'm just kinda looking at the two, so, if you advertise the paramedic, that piece of it, they don't, I mean, your per diems don't have to be paramedics, so they're almost two different lists.
It's nothing to do with the per diem at all.
Oh, he was talking about filling in the per diem.
We're just advertising for the full-time per, uh, paramedic.
And essentially, you wanna ask candidate number two or three, who doesn't get the job, if you can hold their name in case something comes open? Is that really what it comes down to?
Pretty much what we gotta do is we gotta advertise right now.
Right.
He's gonna, they're gonna be able to, that gives them, after they get some names in, gives them the authority to start getting them, you know, interviewed, pretty much what you're doing, it's your interview, get them on a list so that when we say, "Go," they can make the, they can make their hire, or, and come to us.
Us, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly, no.
But they can make the recommendation.
Yep.
And, uh, at the same time, you know, we can get that rolling, um, with this, uh, seeing, you know, if we sign this tonight for the, uh, job description for the Fire Chief, then we can get that out, reposted.
Yeah, and we can, I mean, they can be, we can advertise, and we can start advertising now, you know what I mean? It doesn't have to be, I, I don't, I'm not gonna have it ready to sign tonight, because you guys, you know, but you can give me the authority tonight to advertise them both, I will put the, um, posting together, I'll run it by you as liaison, we'll run it by the chief, it's just gonna have the deadlines and the basics and contact here for the job description, but we can have those out by the end of the week, certainly.
Yeah.
And then next week, we can, um, we have a paramedic job description in place, I believe.
I believe so.
Double check. But you guys can approve those at your next meeting, but at least the advertising could start.
Yeah, get the advertisement out, they get the ball rolling.
But, yep.
And like you said, uh, you know, you can do the interviews, they, they stay on this list for a while.
Yes.
I don't expect it to be that long.
Yep.
I believe we're probably gonna, I think we're.
Well, you could hire a paramedic almost immediately.
Exactly, but they gotta go through the hiring process, so we can't hire them immediately.
Well, I mean, immediately, once the interviewing process is done.
Yeah, so after they get their list, and then we give them the okay to, uh, you know, send somebody our way, then we can go that, I think that we really ought to get the least paramedic hired ASAP.
Yep.
And then, then we worry about, of course, we're working on the Fire Chief separately.
Exactly.
But just get that done, and then we worry about the numbers and see where we come with that.
And we're looking at the, um, if I go back to the base pay of the prior paramedic is what we're gonna start this second, this individual app.
I think what you gotta do, because it's been quite a while.
It's been two years, I think.
Yeah. I think what we oughta do is try to, try to get an average of what the base pay is.
Right, but, but we also don't wanna go, you know, without getting into personnel too much, we don't wanna go over what the current one's taken three years to get to.
No, 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 no.
So let me get the base numbers, and we'll run them by you guys.
Let me, let me sit down with Deputy Smith and sit down, and also, like you, like we said, I mean, when we started this whole program, we weren't even crawling yet, and now, uh, we're running all the time, so, we, we built that job description from other departments and all that stuff, so maybe we need to sit down and look at that again and make sure we may wanna.
Which job description are you talking about?
Well, Rick, you should sit down, and you, and you, and you got, you know, the people on your board.
That's what I'm saying, you know.
If you have any issues.
Because, yeah, exactly, 'cause things change, and like I said, we were, we were just starting out, and, um, at the time, it looked wonderful, but we may, three, you know, three and a half years later, we may look at that job and say, well, maybe we need to change this line or that line, and, and, and everything, 'cause like I said, as the town grows, we need to grow with it too, as, as the program grows, so, um, and everything, now's the time to do it, so.
So am I.
We can get you some numbers and.
Yeah, so am I gonna start advertising?
You can advertise it, the job description.
Right, yeah, it doesn't have to be, so I'll, um, have a proof for you by the end of the week.
Be standard for firefighter, paramedic.
And then, it'd be a good idea to get the description and have her email us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get this.
Look through it yourself, Dave, if you have any issues, can you email us before, you know, we, we do send it.
Yeah, they won't, yeah, they won't sign off until next week.
Until anything next week anyway, so.
It's not gonna hit the papers, if, if we agree, I mean, if, if we, you figure today's Wednesday, so it's gonna take a day for me to draft it, it's not gonna be in the papers till next week anyway, so.
Yeah, so till we, we do that, then, we, we, you know.
We'll make sure one doesn't get ahead of the other, I'll make sure.
Exactly, so let's, next week we'll, we'll revisit this, and then we can say, okay, good, let's go, and, and everything there, so.
It'd be nice to get it advertised though, so, we'll communicate by the end of the week, and I'll include them.
Good.
All right.
Anything else on that?
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, and we're gonna swap D for, okay, so we've already basically done.
Bulge Gate.
Yeah, so we've done that, uh, okay, yep, we're gonna go to C, Bulge Gate.
So, last time we left this off, we were gonna get, um, prices, we, um.
Dave's back again.
Back again.
Can I, so can I just ask, when I'm communicating with Newfield, how did you get, how did the Fire Chief get involved in this? Who contacted you from Newfield?
Me and the, the two Fire Chiefs, me and, and Chief Novell talked about.
So, so did, let me just.
Okay.
Did the Town of Newfield Fire Chief reach out to you and ask you for an opinion? Is that how this happened?
I saw him and I spoke to him about that, I said, hey, you know, what are you, in conversation, between two chiefs, and.
There's a dry hydrant on the other side of the gate.
Okay.
To do with the Fire Department.
Okay, gotcha.
That's the connection.
Which, we both, the Town of Acton and the Town of Newfield, share the duties of keeping it plowed in the winter time, most of the time, we just do it, so, you know, so we just, yeah.
On the side of the bridge.
And I said to him, I said, hey, it's, it's, there's been talk of it, you know, we need to fix the gate, and he said, yeah, no problem, let's get together some night and we'll do it, no big deal, and we left it at that, and now it's kinda escalated a little bit more than maybe it should have. So, um, I did, like you said, we, we looked at it, and there is a little spot, looks like people put canoes in and all that stuff, which is behind the gate now. So all we gotta do is just pull that post up and straighten that out, uh, District One is willing, we'll have to make, have to do a little welding on it, we'll go down, pull it up, so, the most that, um, we looked at, if we had to buy a piece of steel to, to weld back onto the pipe, what, I think the most would be like three hundred dollars.
With labor and everything?
Oh, yeah, all that stuff there.
Do you want me to ask Newfield?
This is something that.
It's a cheap fix.
It's, it's in our right of way.
Yep.
It's off our road, it's something I, I believe you could do on his maintenance budget, uh, I don't think there's an issue with that.
Do we need to ask Newfield if they wanna split the bill with us or anything, or involve them?
No, do they got even blown up, they're getting three hundred dollars?
Cause I'm just gonna tell them that you're gonna fix the.
It's on the Acton side, um, it, it benefits us just as much as anybody.
And, and like I said, in, in, the whole point of putting that, we never had a gate up there for years, but when we redid the culvert, um, that was, um, one of the engineers' concerns was having too much traffic on that, on the dam itself.
My concern is, is people using that, uh, dock their boats in and out, and the problem you have is, is, you know, a bulge lake's already got issues with this milfoil and everything else, and people start putting their boats in there, nobody's watching there, um, and that, and they're, they're plugging it up, so if somebody asks to get in there, do adjust it, you know, it's just not a good situation.
So like I said, all we gotta do is just.
Put it back where it was.
Yes, right where it was, I mean, we, all we got, one post is good, it looks like somebody tried turning around a, a truck or something, I mean, it took something to bend that around.
I think it was done when it was pushed back with a loader.
And, uh, and everything there, so, um, and it's been down for a couple of years, so.
Took something pretty powerful to do what it did.
As when they're pushing back snowbanks with a loader.
So at least send them an email, let them know we're gonna take care of it.
We'll just take care of it, and if we need some labor, whatever, that was the whole point, the Newfield Chief, say you need a hand or whatever, we'll come over some night, we'll take care of it.
I'll talk to her.
Towns working with towns, and that's what it's all about, so, no big deal, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, D, the parking lot, and that's out here, to do with the library, if we could just get the.
Well, you got library parking here, and then you got parking lot here.
Oh, never mind, I'm, yeah, I'm getting ahead of myself. Parking lot.
They're probably the same thing.
Same thing, but different.
Yeah, I just wanna see if you're paying attention.
You really wanna talk about that, Matt?
Let's just talk about the parking lot.
So, um, yeah, parking lot, so I, as I understood it from our workshop, I'm gonna invite the individual that had concerns to the next meeting and, um, see, let her discuss it with you as a group, so it'll be table.
So F is the same thing?
F is the same thing.
Okay, scratch out.
Awesome, we just got those two out of the way.
Yeah, we just saved ourselves ten minutes. Okay, library lights.
So, um, you remember, we talked about that in the beginning, um, she is now down to five lights or six lights?
If she's gonna be here next week to talk about that, she might as well do that too.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I will ask.
Okay. Job description, Fire Chief, we already did that, and now we're going back up to B, the D six, we're running out of time for the, uh, no, so we're running out of time for the D six to get down to the fair this year, so, plan is, is when the dust settles from the fair or whenever, we can do it, get it moved back to the town shed.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's the best thing for right now.
Sounds good, okay. I'll take care of that.
So that's coming off the agenda.
Yep, yep. Okay, new business, tax commitment.
I wanna apologize, I would've liked to have been here with the assessor, assessor, but, um.
Me as well, well.
And I was working.
Okay, so, those are for you, um, and we're gonna go through and chat about each one of them. All right, so David, this form, for your knowledge, either two have seen it, is what they call a tax rate calculator, and this is the system that in Trio, that the assessor and I and the treasurer go through and fill in numbers. Now, ninety percent of the numbers are already preloaded, because Trio is our software that has all the assessing numbers in there, so, we're gonna go through them, um, so this is the two thousand and nineteen, twenty tax information that you have. So the first line is the total taxable real estate, um, you can see that taxable is five hundred and seventy-four million, six hundred and seventy-nine, forty-one, that is up from six million, two hundred and eighty-one, five seventy-six, we have a six million dollar increase in building value.
Wow.
That's huge. So last year, and I brought last year's for you to see it, but I need it for my cheat notes for now, was only five sixty-eight, so we had an increase of over six million in, in building values. Um, the next line is the taxable personal property, uh, personal property this year is seven hundred and thirty-four, uh, hun, a thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, um, last year was five hundred and forty-nine, so we have an increase of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty in personal property, and that is because of Atlantic Broadband, they filed, um, in the town, uh, when they took over differently, and that gave us a hundred and eighty-four thousand, so, our taxable value, um, is up six point three million.
This, this is broadband, um, how about, is that the telephone, uh?
Um, well, so Verizon was already in there.
Yeah.
This is, um, the Metracast, when they took over from Metracast, they filed, um, in a different way that Metracast had, so it increased the numbers, it did more of a, what he called a more accurate base of what they had in town. So, for total taxable value, um, we went from, if you can see that line, it says five hundred and seventy-five million, last year it was five hundred and sixty-eight, so we have a very good increase, so that means that people are continuing to build, and Acton is growing, they're keeping up with, um, with all of that, so that's good. Um, the next line is the homestead exemption, um, last year's homestead exemption was fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty, and you can see this year it's at sixteen thousand, nine sixty-two, um, so we got an increase of taxable value from homesteads, because we're now only certified at a hundred and five percent, last year we were certified at a hundred and ten. So homestead is gonna go, everybody's homestead is gonna go from twenty-two thousand to twenty-one thousand, and that's because of the certification ratio, the farther you get away from when you had a revale, your certification numbers get lower, because your assessing numbers essentially are a little less accurate, because if it's been, you know, ten years since you've done a revale, it's different than if you just did one two years ago, so, a hundred and five is still very good, we're still over a hundred, a hundred percent, so.
Did you say that total exempt value before it was?
Well, that's what you get reimbursed, it's going from twenty-two thousand to twenty-one thousand, um, your number should be.
Did you say sixteen, nine sixty?
Um, it should be.
See that on there?
Yes.
That number's not on here.
Line four, what is, um.
Line four, we've got fifteen, nine sixty.
Fifteen, nine sixty, yeah, last year it was sixteen, nine sixty-two, that's what I'm saying.
You said it, you said it backwards.
I said it backwards, sorry.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
And I do have it on here backwards, so yeah, so that went down because of the certification.
Okay.
So the state of Maine, um, reimburses the town for sixty-two point five percent of the homestead that we lose, so even though we lost the, um, fifteen, nine sixty, you can see the reimbursement amount is the, what is it, nine thou, nine hundred and nine, 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 seven, five, so we're getting that much back. So, the homestead really kinda broke even, um, the next one is, um, Betty, that's your business exempt tax exemption, so, businesses can claim, and these are large businesses, not your small businesses, businesses can claim tax exemption based on not being a retail Businesses can claim tax exemption based on not being a retail equipment. And if they claim that, they have to file it with us by April first. So we have, um, a total of eighty-five, well, this year we have ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty. No, we have eighty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty, right?
Yeah.
But we're getting back from the state fifty percent of that. So you can see the next line down.
Okay.
That's how much you're getting, you're getting forty-two thousand, seven thirty. Last year you got forty-nine thousand, four seventy, but that's a difference of seven thousand when we had a six million dollar increase in taxable value. So there's no concerns there. So the next line is your total valuation base, which is your totals less your homestead plus your, um, your Betty. The next lines are your county tax. So you can see that county tax this year is three hundred and nine thousand, two thirty-nine. Last year it was three hundred and three. So county tax went up six thousand, which we knew going into budget season. Municipal, based on everything that's approved at town meeting, um, is two point nine. Uh, last year it was two point eight, so we had a small increase for municipal, that was not bad. School actually had a decrease. Last year they were at, uh, four point nine, one, two. Actually, no, they had, yeah, small increase, I'm sorry, fifty thousand, four point nine, six. So at the end of the day, I mean, if you look at your county, municipal, and school, that's still nothing compared to the amount of taxable that you have. So now that you look, now if you look at the bottom of it, you have options. And I don't have the one in front of me, so I have to come over so I can, I only have the old one. So when you look at, um, sixteen through twenty-three, what that's telling you is, it's giving you rates so you can play with numbers in Trio and you can get an idea of how much you're gonna put in undesignated fund, how much money you're gonna move forward, and get an idea of what you're gonna have your tax rate set at. And Michelle did give me all of the, um, municipal revenue and county numbers, um, in case anybody wants to look at them, but we did prove them two or three times. So you can see that, um, the maximum, you're looking at seventeen and eighteen, which is your maximum tax rate and your minimum tax rate. So this current range has you at eleven point ninety-seven and maximum at twelve fifty-seven. For the sake of this calculation, the recommendation that's before you tonight, you can see number nineteen in the middle, we put twelve dollars and five cents. Twelve dollars and five cents is what the tax rate is at now, so you would have no increase at all. And if you look at this paper here, which is last year's, it's gonna show you that your overlay last year was thirty-seven thousand. You do have a little more of an overlay of forty-five thousand this year. This is moving two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance. Last year we moved three hundred thousand forward. Michelle didn't think it was necessary to move any more forward because we don't need our overlay any higher. The overlay is intended for abatements and supplements, if we, um, poverty abatements. We have used such a small amount of that overlay in the last X amount of years, there's no reason to go higher. And Ed, I think, will, will attest, as much as we like to see, I, I think it's more of a goal to keep taxes steady than keep them down because one year, three or four years ago...
One year we went down and it...
Went down too much.
It was not good.
And it reflected, so, I mean, you could put three hundred thousand forward and drop the tax rate, but you're gonna make up for it next year.
I, I don't.
If we can, if we can flatline...
You were, so, you were flatlining, so your twelve dollars and five cents, which is the flatline that, that Michelle and I and the assessor that everybody recommends that you do, that flatline gives you everything that you see there. It keeps you an overlay, it still allows you, you still have, um, three months' worth of money in your undesignated fund. Michelle did say that you, you have a little bit more than three months, not counting the school, but she cautioned, um, that you remember that undesignated fund is not real money.
Right.
There are uncollected taxes and, uh, the auditor is going to be presenting to you soon, um, write-offs from the original billing company for fire and rescue. There's a lot of uncollected taxes, uncollected bills, and that's all part of undesigned, anything that the town of Acton is owed, so...
Does she have an actual number of what we've, we can depend on?
For...
Collected?
Yes, so in, um, in one of the, in one of these lines is your revenues. So, um, if you look at number thirteen, line thirteen...
Yeah.
So that revenue is a combination of everything. So from, from your collections, from your excise tax, from any town, from building fees, that's what we're estimating revenues on, and that includes...
Just over a million dollars.
Correct.
But that, that's like you said, that's with everything added into it.
That's everything added in, and that's...
Even the unpaid stuff?
Well, no, because we take, when we estimate our revenues, we take actual numbers of the last three years and average it. We always estimate our revenues a little bit low. I mean, like for excise tax, for example, last three years it's been three hundred and fifty thousand. We've collected four-ten, four-twenty-five, four-forty, but we waited to see that increase for three years before we let it affect the tax rate, because it could've been a fluke thing. But anyway, so at the end of the day, um, we are very pleased to, to be able to present to you, um, a tax rate of the exact same rate, twelve dollars and five cents, there'd be no increase at all. That is certainly based on the new buildings, uh, newest, you know, assessing all of the hard work of everybody and of course warrant and finance and the voters of keeping that municipal and county school, everything kinda flatlined. So, uh, generally we would, um, ask you to review it and, and take some time to think about it, um, but...
The school, so the school will only go up that little, it's, that's pretty amazing.
Yeah, and that makes a, yeah, that makes, that makes a difference. And those, I mean, county is the only thing we can, can affect. I mean, the homestead, we don't have any control over that, what the state's gonna reimburse us.
Didn't they just pass something, so the homestead's gonna go back up again for the...
So homestead, and I was hoping this wouldn't come up, homestead is supposed to be going to twenty-five thousand next year, and...
It's twenty-one now, it's gonna go to twenty-five.
And they're supposed to be giving everybody a check, but please don't call me, ask me where your check is. Because this is all a legislation and it may not happen and it may not go to twenty-five thousand. That is the talk, you're absolutely right, but we like to see things on paper from them first.
So if that happens, then we're, we're gonna end up getting less revenue.
Well, right, because exactly, the more we exempt...
Yeah.
But that sixty...
We wanna stay where we are, we don't wanna deplete the...
That sixty-two point five, um, that number adjusts as well. How much they reimburse you? So last year they only reimbursed us fifty percent.
So the, you said we're putting, uh, two hundred and eighty-five thousand forward.
Correct, at the undesignated fund.
And we were authorized by town meeting to put...
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand forward, okay. So, okay. And, yeah, so, okay. I thought it was more at town meeting than that, but...
If we go with the two eighty, whatever, we're, we're cool.
Yeah, no, it's fine, I mean, I'm just, I'm just looking. Now, that number we're putting forward, is that reflected into the, um...
Other revenues.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, is that reflected in that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
It's all part of your revenues.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I guess what I'm getting at is, there's a little bit of savings there, there's a little extra money. We may be able to look fo- look at what we talked about earlier with fire chiefs and all that type of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, my, my big thing...
Yeah, yeah, okay. We'll have a little money to work with, so, okay.
I mean, my big thing is, I, I just wanna keep, I wanna keep the general fund where we need it. I don't wanna blow it up, I don't, you know, tax people for putting money into a savings account for rainy days. But, um, if we can stay right where we are, keep the tax rate the same, um, still keep our, our general fund where it needs to be. Uh, I'd say that's the thing to do.
Yeah, so you're happy with that number?
I'm happy with that number.
You happy with that number?
Very.
Do I hear a motion? Oh, do you need anything else?
Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, this is a big deal to us.
I know it is, it's huge.
We, uh, I wanna tell you David, that this is, um, we have a policy that says that we can't, as far as our undesignated fund, it'll never be, um, more than, you know, no minimum, no less than two months' worth of bills, no more than four months. So that policy in place doesn't allow it to blow up.
Yeah, I know.
No, no, I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, in the past it has gotten...
It's gotten pretty fat.
We got pretty, yeah, it had, it had quite a bit to it, but the last couple of years we've had to use a little bit of it too. So it was there, so...
Real money, so...
Yeah.
All right, so now if you decide to make your motion, there are, so this is the assessor's certificate of assessment. It says that you're certifying, um, the taxes, it's got the dates, all of these numbers, Michelle has checked and rechecked. You can cross compare them to what you have. You need to sign on three places, it indicates the tax collector to collect X amount. But there are one, two, three, four places to sign. And I'm gonna go grab this form while you're doing that, 'cause I forgot something.
Okay.
So what we're gonna do here, we're gonna stay with the same tax rate, which will be that, right there.
The twelve dollars and five cents.
Yeah.
So... Just looking at notes, I know it's on this form. There it is, right there, okay, twelve, five. Yeah. Okay.
We just wanna make a motion...
Just a motion to, uh...
Set the tax rate at twelve dollars and five cents. I just did. I make a motion to set the tax rate at twelve dollars and five cents.
And to sign the certificate.
Sign the certificate of assessment.
Okay, moved and seconded, to set the tax rate at twelve dollars and five cents, which is the same amount that we had last year, so there's zero increase, which I think is an amazing thing. And to sign the form. Any further discussion?
Nope.
No, call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Like, uh, like Jennifer said earlier, this is a culmination of everything that this board's done and everything that the warrant and finance has done this past year to, uh, work hard to keep the numbers down and keep things where it needs to be, but also trying to run the town in a responsible way. And, uh, most of all, to the taxpayers that come out to town meeting and go through the process and look at the numbers. So this is, uh, this is a big kudos to you. Thank you.
Did I miss one on the back page?
Me missed. You missed two.
I did, I just saw the front one rolled away, I was so excited.
That's okay, you knew.
So if all goes well, we will, uh, transfer the, um, new numbers to the tax billing tomorrow. Hopefully we will see tax bills at the first... You say that.
Oh, that was me being...
They're not calling you.
That was the taxpayer in me coming out.
Yeah. Start giving your number out.
You gotta keep the business going, so...
Don't call me until it's the middle of September if you haven't seen it. They'll be online immediately, and now you know it's the same as last year, so if you really wanna pay before your bill, you can always take last year's amount.
Okay.
All right, so...
Next week's meeting.
Wait, 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 David missed one there.
Did I miss another one? I signed three times, how many pages are there?
There were four.
Oh, there's four? Well, I saw three.
So since you're all in a good mood about the tax commitment... So how do you feel about meeting on Monday next week?
Pardon?
How do you feel about meeting on Monday next week?
Has anything to do with the fair maybe and Cal?
I mean, or you can just, I mean, you can meet without me, but then I still have to prep all of it, and I'm gonna, I mean, I never take time off, and yeah, I'd like to have Wednesday night off. Or you could not meet at all and just come sign your warrants.
Can we skip a night?
Skip a night.
Can we skip a week?
Um, wait, let me think.
There's nothing major going on, right?
I mean, we got some fire department stuff, but...
Yeah, but we can, but you've given David and I the authority to post him and advertise.
Take care of that, so...
And really, our office should be really busy working on the tax commitment too. So can we do no meeting next week?
We can do no meeting if it's, with the board.
You'll come in, um...
We still need to come in and sign the warrants.
You need to come in Tuesday and Wednesday, Tuesday and or Wednesday.
We got an annual thing, the Acton Fair, we don't have a meeting.
So...
All in favor?
With that said, I'm gonna need you to walk in the parade too.
Boy, I just told you about my blister on my foot, I don't know if I can do that.
Thank you. So I can sign you up?
What day's the parade?
Uh, Saturday or Sunday? Saturday? Yeah, Saturday. Good, is it in there? Can you see?
Ten o'clock?
If I walk in the parade, I wanna make sure our deputy's with me.
Saturday?
Ten AM Saturday.
And I, I, uh, we'll have passes for you guys here on the next day or so, but yes, we really would like to put you at the parade.
I may need a reminder.
I'm getting used to that, I'm just kidding.
I'm probably still gonna be having my beauty sleep, but that's okay.
Oh, come on, it'd be good for you. All right, so no meeting next week?
Actually, it would be kinda cool for us to walk in that parade.
Do what I have to do.
I got a couple, two or three I could walk. Bring my new horse and walk him.
Thank you. I happen to be in charge of the parade.
Yeah. Okay, so no meeting next week?
No meeting next week.
Are we still gonna try to...
No.
Okay.
Nope, if anything...
Just come in and do the warrants.
I will call you if there's an issue, otherwise we'll handle it.
All righty.
Okay. G I S agreement.
So from eleven, one, uh, it's, they always send us a month early, this is the G I S maps online. November first, October twentieth, uh, this is identical to last year, twenty-four hundred dollars. Once again, for many years they have not gone up, it's all budgeted for. Need a signature.
Thank you. Okay, G I S internet service.
This is your maps online.
Yeah. With C A I technologies. Do I hear a motion? Sign the internet agreement with G I, C I, C A I.
So we'll make a motion to sign the, uh, internet agreement with C, is it C or G?
G I S.
G I.
That's a G?
G A I.
That's G I S.
G I S.
It's cartographic, C A I, G I S.
All right, that's why we're confused.
Yes.
I was.
Yeah, in the amount of twenty-four hundred.
In the amount of twenty-four hundred dollars.
I second the motion.
Moved and seconded, further discussion, or for vote, all in favor, all opposed.
They haven't gone up, yeah, we, and we don't have any problems with them. After we get through the fair and taxes, we need to start having some conversations about assessing and assessing work, but that will, uh, I'll save you that for the first of September.
Do a vote this time.
Good job. Okay, District One, prior District One's letter.
Letter I read to you in the workshop?
Yep, yep. Yep, this letter's going out to the former District One Road Commissioner. Trying to get back some equipment he has. So, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, send this letter to, um, District One?
Moved and seconded to send it to the former District One Road Commissioner.
Former.
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 Former District One.
Sorry about that, Will.
Yep.
Shall I send it sort of in?
Yep, yep. Any further discussion?
I, I, um, did talk to, um, Will, and I asked him not to get involved.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep, very much.
He did ask me if he want, he should, and I said, no, we'll take care of this, this is...
Yeah, it's our job to do it.
Yep, yep.
I'm not even getting involved in this one.
No.
I'm gonna remove the mandalit.
Yep.
That should tell you something.
I just hope this goes smooth and we can move forward.
I'm sure it will.
Yeah.
It'll be fine.
Okay, call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
Is it to you there? I know. Uh, I just got a, a text message saying that I cannot walk in the parade.
I was wondering what I looked for.
I was pretty excited, I have a football game.
Oh, is that what she's...
Yeah, so I guess I'm being watched.
That's awesome, that was kinda funny. What time does it end, is there any way we can sneak him in?
I don't know the information.
I wanna know what time it begins.
It might come over my phone here shortly, I might know, so...
What time does that, uh, football game begin?
Would like a note?
Yes.
A parent's note that he can be there.
Yep. Okay.
I'll do my best.
Uh, next item is social media, I asked for this to be put on. As everyone knows, there's a social media frenzy out there worldwide, but hang on. You know, it's ninety-nine percent of the things out there on it are very good and very informative. Lately, on particularly the Acton's page, which is not run by the town of Acton, it's a total separate entity, whoever runs it, nothing to do with the town, nothing to do with anybody in the town hall.
None of us are administrators, none of us have any control over it.
Nope, nothing like that. There's some things that have been put out there, very false information. If you see some of this out there, take it with a grain of salt. I did respond to one today that was throwing a number of people under the bus, including myself, and I wasn't even involved with what was being said. I wasn't at the meeting that was being said or anything like that. And a number of the people that was being, that was basically being slandered on there, um, weren't there either. So, don't feed into the frenzy. That's all I ask. Yeah, there's a lot of things that go on on there, like I said, there's a lot of good things, a lot of good information. A lot of good things come up for the library, a lot of good things come up for the fair. Just going on in town, good things. But there's this little segment out there that has to continually, um, keep things riled up. And it's just, it's exhausting. And maybe that's what they want, but...
I'd like to add to it.
Go right ahead.
Because I've been, I kinda feel bad, I'm, I'm used to the stuff being written by me, so it's whatever, but, um, the, the individuals that are writing on this po- this, this site, which is a very great site, I love the site myself. You know, I kinda, you know, gets heads up on, you know, stuff that we're missing, you know, sometimes, and, you know, events around town and all that. But, um, this, this site, one of these individuals, um, is attacking, um, our road commissioners and our fire chief and this and that. This individual doesn't even live in the town of Acton that I know of, okay? It, it's kinda mind-boggling, and honestly, at the end of the day, um, it's a lot of fake news. And, uh, it, you know, if the, if these, any individual out there that has a question, and they can't get ahold of their department head, I invite them to call me, or I'm not gonna do it, whatever.
Call any of us, come to the meetings.
Unfortunately, the, the, what, what was going on during that, this huge discussion on, on Facebook, and, and I would love to have chimed in, but I didn't, I restrained myself. I, I believe that's what I should be doing. And, uh, I could've straightened out the situation pretty quick, I thought, but I restrained myself. But the problem is, is, um, when you don't have the information correct and you're throwing somebody else under the bus, um, without the facts being right, there's people there that take offense to that. And, um, it wasn't the individual's problem, and they were making his problem. And, uh, unfortunately, the individual that's writing this stuff on Facebook used to work for the town of Acton for years. He should've known that he was attacking the wrong person. I don't wanna attack any other guy either, okay? That site is not for that. And if he, if he has an issue, actually, you, he's not even a taxpayer, don't even be making an issue. If you're a taxpayer, call me up.
Yep.
But if, if there's an individual that has an issue with Newbridge Road or any other road in town, call the town hall and we'll make a complaint.
Yeah.
It's not to be done on Facebook.
We'll work through, we, bottom line is, Facebook is not the place to issue a complaint. We don't accept complaints on Facebook. We accept complaints called to the town hall, written and sent to the town hall, or anyone that calls us. That's where the complaints come through. If there's complaints that come through on Facebook, it's, you know, they're, they're out there, we don't know if the person is real or not. So, that's not the way we're taking complaints.
When, when I was road commissioner, if someone said, you know, and matter of fact, one of, one of, uh, one of these issues was there was a pothole that I didn't know, there was a settle spot in the road and it popped on Facebook and I happened to see it, great. You know, that's, that's a tool, okay?
But in which case, you're gonna contact the individual and you're gonna know. It's gonna, you're gonna know it's real.
But to go on to attack a town official who had nothing to do with it in the first place, to have, because a lot of people in the town of Acton don't understand that individual's not responsible for that, okay? And, um, it, it's, it's, it's really too bad it's to that point. But, you know, the individual that was attacking the other individual, the, you know, he didn't, I think he did the right thing and, and didn't, and didn't get too crazy about it. And, uh, I just hope that the other people in town realize that the individual that was writing this stuff here is, you know, a complete knucklehead, so...
And if, if you are, um, on a board committee...
I could've been on.
Board, committee, elected official, I mean, other than, than defending yourself, I would not feed into it. I would not post anything, I would highly recommend that you don't post anything because no matter what you post, it's gonna get twisted. So, um, that's kinda where I'd like to leave it. I do also wanna say to, I believe I know who started the site, um, you know, the, the What's Up in Acton site, and he started it for the right reasons. It's a very...
She.
She.
She, a woman did, and she's long gone out of town.
Okay, well...
The one that runs it now, though, does a good job.
The individual started it, started it for the right reasons, to get information out there. The, uh, I know there's a couple of administrators on it now, uh, they do a great job of trying to police it. There was some posts today that were taken down, which is perfect, so. And then, and I did have an issue a year or two ago, um, with one of them, and it was also taken down. Once again, it was a slanderous, false post, so. That's where I'd like to leave that, so, thank you very much for that side of it. Uh, with that, do you, neither of you two have anything else to add?
I don't.
Nope, okay. We have a short executive session tonight, and I promise it'll be sho- well, I shouldn't promise, I don't know what it's about, so...
It should take less than a minute.
It's a personnel issue, right?
Quick personnel issue. So do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion, go into executive session, four oh five, six, A one.
The time is seven thirty. We will come back out of executive session, if there's any decisions to be made, we'll make it then. And other than that, we will be concluding the meeting as long as there's no public comment. So, thank you, we'll be back.
Football game starts in ten. Football game starts in ten. He's hanging in there.
He is.
All right, appreciate it.
Do we need to chat? Oh, do I, do we need to chat? Oh, you pointed at me, it's almost sure. Okay.
Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
I second that.
They're all chewing cookies from Sandy Shields.
At seven-thirty-five. Moved. Come out of executive session and seconded, do I hear a motion? I mean, do I hear a vote, uh, all in favor, all opposed? Sorry, I got excited with those cookies. Thank you, Sandy Fields, for the cookies.
Delicious.
Yes. Okay.
So, we gotta, we gotta make a decision.
Um, yep. Okay.
Warrants in there, if you're looking. Oh, I don't know what you're doing, never mind.
No, I mean, we just need to make a, we just need to make a motion that-
Yep, so your number's in there.
As a payroll.
Yep. See, so I did know what you were doing, I was thinking.
Forgot to sign another one.
I guess so.
It's gonna be under the fire chiefs packet, I'm sure.
This is over here.
There it is, right there. No, it's probably not under the fire chiefs packet, is it? It's gonna be in, on there.
I think it is.
The dollar amount will be.
Yeah. There we go, right here, no, that's Will. Right here.
Okay. Okay. Question was? We can't say the question?
No.
Okay.
In order to discuss, no, just say what you're gonna do.
Okay. Uh, we just need to authorize the payment to the fire chief, the interim fire chief.
Yep.
We don't, do we need to say the dollar amount? Yeah, we should. Yep, so, basically, um, so the interim fire chief is gonna receive three-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars per week as the interim chief.
That's half the taxes.
Yep, that's half the taxes, yeah. Which is the, uh, no, it's two different codes. He's getting something else.
Yeah.
Is he getting three-hundred-and-twenty-one or three-hundred-and-sixty-three?
I think it's three-twenty-one.
That sounds-
How do we make a motion to pay him the same amount when he was originally?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it's the three-twenty-one.
Chief last year, I didn't see one slip in here, so. Yeah. Yeah, basically, he's getting the same pay that he was getting last time he was interim chief.
Is that a motion?
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we pay the fire chief, David Langley, the same salary we paid last, last time.
Yep.
Yeah.
Who to second, any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay. That takes care of that. That works.
I believe it is the three-twenty-one.
I think that number sounds right to me, it rings a bell.
Yes.
Hand that back to. Yep. Okay, that takes care of that. Any public comment, anybody from the public at all? Anyone at all in the audience have anything they wanna say? Nope? Okay.
Oop, we got Will.
Almost made it.
After we fix that gate, are we gonna lock it, are we gonna put a Knox box on it, or?
I think we discussed putting a lock, a knock, lock box on it.
Discuss the Knox box.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, guys have to have access to it.
Yeah, so, all right.
That should be something the fire department will-
I think Dave, Dave's, I think it was Dave, last time we spoke about it, two weeks ago, that they would supply the lock box.
Yep.
And need to make sure that the town gets a copy of the key, once the lock is made, we need to store it in our vault.
No.
What?
Oh, for the gate itself. Yes. Yes. Well, I thought you were talking-
Key for you.
No, no.
Knox box keys don't.
We have, I mean, we have master keys to everything here, just in case, if they're in the vault, not for me.
Yes.
Yikes.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Okay, announcements. There's an open seat on the board, on boards and commission committees. Cemetery, we have one seat, Recreation Committee, we have one seat. And Acton Farm Dinner is, go right ahead, you can read that one.
All right, the Acton Farm Dinner, to benefit the Cashin family, Sunday, August eighteenth, at Look Both Ways Farms, four fifty-eight Peck Road. They're gonna have a farmer's market from three to six, a farm table dinner from five to seven, it's twenty dollars a plate, and kids eat free. They're, they're gonna have events, too, till sunset, farm nature activities, story hour. They're gonna have some music and acoustic jam from three to six, bring your own instruments, cooking on site, service dogs only, live band from six to nine. You can donate produce, volunteer or sign up for the market, contact Gavin Maloney, six zero nine, five zero two, four eight two zero. Well, that sounds like a fun, fun day.
Does. Okay, and we're looking for videographers, someone to run the cameras, so, oh, go right ahead. Let me borrow that for a minute. Go right ahead.
Looking for videographers wanted, Acton Public Access TV Station is looking for a qualified videographer, editor, to join our team. Responsibilities, working with manage, working with the manager, with training, accepting scheduled assignments, knowing the equipment to set up and take down, troubleshoots, problems with the equipment, potential video editing, attention's to detail, all that stuff there, so, um, what are we gonna go, send resumes to apat@actonmaine.org, or Town of Acton, attention, A.P.A.T., thirty-five H. Road, Acton Main, oh four oh one.
Sounds great. Okay. Do you have anything else?
Nope.
Do you have anything else?
I don't.
Jen-
Oh, I do. I may not make the Acton Fair, 'cause it is ten o'clock for the football game, so.
As I heard that, I also said, that's convenient. Okay, that's fine. Thank you for the, it's the thought that counts. Can you get just the face photocopy, then we'll put them on sticks and carry?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I guess we've had enough for tonight. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
All in favor? Good night, all.